Good evening, everyone. My name is Lawrence Reap program, the deputy town moderator, and I call the meeting to order. Notice of the special town meeting was published in the November 22nd, 2011 edition of the New Haven Register. It was also mailed to each household where an eligible voter resides and was posted by the town clerk on the town sign card on November 15th, 2011. Is there a motion to waive the reading of the legal notice?
I so move.
Seconded by? Eric Lee Roy. All those in favor?
Is there discussion?
There will be discussion. Anybody want to turn on the motion?
Are you going to read the notice? Do you think the notice that was mailed to all the electors in the town of Woodbridge and qualified taxpayers?
If the motion is defeated, it will be read.
That's just a question.
If the motion, if the motion to waive the reading of the notice, if that motion is approved, there will be no reading.
So you'll agree, is it agreed that the notice that was mailed to all the electors and qualified taxpayers said that it would be held on Thursday, November 30th, 2011?
One that was mailed says that in one place and other places. There any other comments or questions about the motion? Since 200 chairs have been set up in this room, the moderator takes notice that we have a forum of at least 100 people, so as the vote can go forward. All those in favor of dispensing, waiving of the reading of the notice, raise your hands. Maybe you all stand up, it might be easier to see.
Notice opposed? Everybody's in. The motion passes as we read the leading notice and the way.
Pursuant to the charter and section 7-7 of the Connecticut general statutes as amended, the vote on the resolution of the call of the special meeting is removed from the call of such meeting and adjourned to a referendum vote as an adjourned town meeting to be held on December 13th, 2011 between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Eastern Standard Time. As a result, the special town meeting will be held to consider and discuss the resolution, and no vote on the resolution will be taken this evening. There are a lot of people here that would like to be heard on this, and we're going to give everybody an opportunity to state their views or ask them questions. I would ask that everybody be respectful of the speaker at the time, and so that we can all hear what has to be said. The Board of Select on November 15th, 2011, the board voted to approve the call to hold the special town meeting on November 30th, 2011, with a referendum to be held on December 13th, 2011, and to send a copy of the call to each household. To act upon the resolution entitled, quote, "Resolution for the sale to Toll Brothers of approximately 17 plus or minus acres of land within the property known as the Country Club of Woodbridge and being a part of the property approximately described and identified as 50 Woodfield Road, Woodbridge, Connecticut, located on the western side of Woodfield Road, approximately 600 feet south of the intersection with Faddle Street, Woodbridge, Connecticut, and restricted to the construction of approximately 54 age-restricted residential townhomes for the purchase price of $2,200,500, subject to a credit off the purchase price of no more than $400,000 for Woodbridge on the east, for the removal, the change of location of the cell tower in the eastern side of Woodfield Road, Woodbridge, Connecticut, and further to send a copy of the call to each household with a qualified voter pursuant to section 7.6 of the Connecticut general statutes as amended. Voting in favor, Coyne, Heller, Jacobs, Kenebeck, Sheehy, absent, Rodea. The board voted on a motion by Mr. Kenebeck and approved by Ms. Heller pursuant to charter and section 7-7 of the Connecticut general statutes as amended that the vote on the resolution, item 1 above, of the call to special town meeting to be held on November 30th, 2011, be removed from the call of such meeting and adjourned to a referendum vote as an adjourned town meeting to be held on December 13th, 2011, held to consider and discuss the resolution, and no vote will be taken, and that the referendum will be held in the center gymnasium or meeting house lane, Woodbridge, Connecticut. The vote will be by ballot, and the polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I, Coyne, Heller, Jacobs, Kenebeck, Sheehy, absent, Rodea, and signed by Edward Wong, Sheehy, first elected town of Woodbridge. Two, Board of Finance on November 17th, 2011. At a meeting of the Board of Finance held November 17th, 2011, the following acts were taken. Motion by Matthew Giglietti, seconded by Sandra Stein, to approve the Toll Brothers proposal, purchase approximately 17 plus or minus acres located on 50 Woodfield Road for the construction of approximately 54 age-restricted residential homes for the purchase price of $2,200,500, subject to credit off the purchase price of no more than $400,000 for the relocation of the existing cell tower, to be sent to a special meeting to be held on November 30th, 2011, and a referendum on December 13th, 2011. I, Giglietti, Stein, as the Gito King, nay, none, absent from the vote, Ewing, Rubin, signed, Matthew Giglietti, Chair, Board of Finance, Town of Woodbridge. Before we open up the questions and comments from the audience, we have several speakers this evening. The first is going to be the first elected, Mr. Sheehy.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special town meeting on the Toll Brothers proposal. Presentation tonight will be as follows. I will give you an overview of the history and of the negotiations with Toll Brothers for the purchase of 17 acres of property on Woodfield Road adjacent to the Country Club of Woodbridge for the construction of 54 condominium units for age 55 and over housing. Attorney Jim Carino will then review the terms of the Toll Brothers proposal. Tony Genavice, our finance director, will provide a financial analysis of the proposal as it affects the town's debt of $7 million for the purchase of the Country Club of Woodbridge, and other requests for capital funding which the Board of Select anticipate receiving over the next two years. Ray Campbell-Dusky of Toll Brothers will make a presentation concerning the 55 and over housing proposed to be constructed. We will then entertain comments and answer questions from the audience. By way of history, in 2009, the former Woodbridge Country Club, facing foreclosure, made the decision to sell its property at public auction. The town of Woodbridge was a successful bidder, and residents overwhelmingly approved the property acquisition for $7 million, so the town would control the future of the parcel. The other two bidders at the auction were real estate developers who were proposing large-scale projects that would have resulted in losses of 150 acres of open space and uncontrolled development. The Board of Select is considering the best way to reduce the $7 million indebtedness incurred as a result of the purchase of the Woodbridge Country Club. I said at the May 2009 town meeting that approved the club purchase, that the Board of Select would work to mitigate the impact of the purchase on taxpayers and explore the possibility of planned future development of part of that property. The possible sale of these approximately 17 acres is consistent with what we talked about at the town meeting and represents many months of effort. The Board of Select created the Country Club of Woodbridge Lead Design Committee to serve in an advisory role to the Board of Select. The Lead Design Committee formed four subcommittees, one of which was property development. In March 2010, it was the consensus of the property development committee that a small part of the total site could be earmarked for a high-density development, which would have the potential to complement and benefit the Country Club of Woodbridge by reducing the debt and providing tax revenue. On May 20, 2010, the Woodbridge Conservation Commission met, and according to their minutes, unanimously agreed to make a formal request to the Board of Select to carve out the Johnson Road, Woodfield, Woodfield Road parcel for appropriate development. The town has been operating the club through a golf management committee, and fees collected over the past three summers have covered our debt service for the purchase. Last year, the Board of Select publicized a comprehensive request for proposal to implement a long-term management plan for the property as a full-service club, including the sale of the Country Club of Woodbridge, but only one offer resulted from the golf management company we engaged to run the club. There were no responses for the sale of the Country Club of Woodbridge. Prolonged negotiations with NDM Golf toward a long-term agreement, including possible sales of property as a country club, were unsuccessful. The town will continue to operate the golf course, the swimming pool, and the tennis courts, and the Board of Select will determine the best way to operate the club in the future. Earlier this year, the Board of Select issued a request for an expression of interest, engage interest in the possible sale of approximately 17-acre portion of the property along Woodfield Road, with a goal of reducing the long-term debt. Three parties expressed interest, but Toll Brothers, a nationally known and respected builder, was the only company to present an offer. The Board of Select also retained Joseph F. Parelly, certified appraiser, Appraiser with Advanced Appraisal Associates LLC, to provide an appraisal of the 17 acres for development for 53 condominium units for age-restricted housing. Mr. Parelly submitted an appraisal report to the Board of Select dated June 7, 2011, which stated in his opinion the fair market value of the property was $2,490,000. This appraisal did not include the cost of removal and relocation of the cell tower from the 17 acres. In my speech following my swearing-in as first elected on June 29th, 2011, I informed the town that the Board of Select, quote, "is exploring the sale of land owned by the town of Woodbridge on Woodfield Road adjacent to the Country Club of Woodbridge for age 55 and over housing." The proceeds of this sale would be applied to reduce the principal of the $7 million debt. The real property taxes realized from the sale of the residential units would be applied for the payment of the outstanding debt, end of quote. The Toll Brothers proposal provides for the sale by the town of Woodbridge and Toll Brothers of 17 acres of land along the western side of Woodfield Road adjacent to the Country Club of Woodbridge, as shown on this map to my left, for a purchase price of $2,200,500, subject to a credit off the purchase price of no more than $400,000 for removal and relocation of the existing tower. Toll Brothers will construct 54 townhomes for age-restricted, 55 and over housing. In response to concerns raised at public discussions on November 1st and November 9th, there will be no disturbance of poll number one. The four existing tennis courts will be retained. In addition to the special town meeting approval on December 13th, the proposal requires the approval of the town plan and zoning commission and the inland wetlands agency. The Board of Select believes that the Toll Brothers proposal presents an opportunity for the town to generate new revenue, achieve our goal of maintaining the remaining land as open space, and allow for the continued operation of the club. If this proposed sale is approved, we owe applying approximately $1,800 from the sale to reduce the $7 million purchase price of the club property. In addition, Tony Genavice projects that as townhouses are built, the new property taxes collected will more than offset all principal and interest costs associated with the purchase of the club. In fact, within a few years, the tax revenue could be expected to help fund other town operating in capital expenses, including renovations necessary to Vicar Road School, the police department, and the construction of a new public works facility. The construction of these condominium units by Toll Brothers, a nationally recognized and respected real estate developer, should attract many buyers, some of whom are or may become borrowers, and all of whom are potential customers at the restaurant at the Country Club of Woodbridge. By allowing us to pay off approximately $1,800,000 of the $7 million debt, the sale of approximately 17 acres for limited development would give the town the opportunity to make the purchase of the club self-sustaining and keep 130 acres of golf course as open space in perpetuity, while easing the tax burden on our residents, particularly in these difficult times. The Board of Select has held public information sessions concerning this proposal on November 1, November 9, and November 15, at which a number of questions and concerns were raised which will be addressed tonight. I will ask Attorney Jim Carino to review the Toll Brothers in detail, and he will also comment on the following. The process for the approval of the Toll Brothers proposal under the town charter; the process of the approval of the contract of sale, including the town of Woodbridge and Toll Brothers, by the Board of Select if the sale is approved; the process to amend the town plan of conservation and development; the application to be filed by Toll Brothers for the town planning and zoning commission for age 55 and over housing; the enforcement of 55 and over age-restricted housing, should there be subsequent purchases of the property; the enforcement of 55 and over age-restricted housing as to one who inherits the property, or if the owner should go into bankruptcy; and the limitation of the zoning approval to the property proposed to be sold. Our town attorney, Gerald Wyden, will comment on whether the sale of the 17 acres of the Country Club property to Toll Brothers would impact the possible sale of the golf course with the conservation movement; the number of homes for sale in Woodbridge, and the use of a commercial real. All of these questions were raised prior public information setting. So with that, I'll introduce Attorney Jim Carino.
Thank you, Ed. Let me first start with reviewing the sales terms that were originally set forth in Toll Brothers' letter dated October 5th, 2011, as amended by the November 14th letter. As the first election indicated, Toll Brothers has taken into account many of the public comments made at the various board selecting meetings, and revised the terms to lessen the density and the impact on the golf course. The main terms are as follows. The site is the 17 plus or minus acres located on the western side of Woodfield Road from approximately the tennis courts along the first hole. This includes the area around the cell tower, and was reduced from the original proposal of 19 acres. The use would be for 54 townhouse-style homes with a clubhouse and common area for those residents, that was reduced from the original number of 58. It would be age-restricted pursuant to the United States Fair Housing Act, which is 42 U.S. Code 3607, subsection B, which is also provided for in the Connecticut general statutes 46A-54C. And that means that it would be 55 and older, which means at least one resident must be over 55, and no one 18 years of age or younger can reside there for longer than a short period of time. The monetary terms, they propose a purchase price of $2,200,500 based on 54 homes. For every additional home, there'd be an increase in that price by $40,750. Toll Brothers would be responsible for the cell tower relocation, and would receive a credit, all of that purchase price, up to and no more than $40,000. Their initial proposal contemplated a deposit of $50,000 on signing, with the payment of the purchase price half at the closing, and another half 21 months thereafter. If less than 54 homes, Toll Brothers would retain the right to terminate the agreement if less than 54 were approved by the regulatory bodies. The details of the deposit and the payment term are still being negotiated, and would then go, as I've set forth in the major business of what states that currently. Keep in mind that the entire sale is conditioned on many contingency. The town's obligations are conditioned on the special town meeting approval of the sale of the 17 acres, which is your meeting tonight and your subsequent vote. Thereafter, any final contract would have to be approved by the Board of Select. Toll's obligations are contingent upon their due diligence to determine the feasibility of the layout and the engineering and the environmental conditions of the 17 acres. It would be subject to all governmental approvals, including zoning and wetlands for the 54 townhomes. It'd also have to obtain all applicable approvals for the cell tower relocation, including the AT&amp;T approval for that removal. There is, however, no financing attached to Toll Brothers' obligations. A closing would be set to occur 60 days after all the approvals were issued and final. Obviously, Toll Brothers would be responsible for all improvements and all cost of the approvals. And outlining generally what the approvals would be, and in every one of these steps, there is public input. The first step, obviously, here is pursuant to the town charter, section 4-8, requires to the proposed sale of the 17 acres for the stated price to be decided at a special town meeting, which, as you know, has been noticed for tonight pursuant to the Connecticut general statutes, will be adjourned to a ballot vote. If the citizens approve the sale, the next step is that the actual contract will be negotiated, finalized, and approved by the Board of Select in the first election. Thereafter, the application process will begin. There'd be an amendment to the plan of conservation development. In order to facilitate this age-restricted housing in this particular area, the plan will have to be amended. The town's access staff to begin that process. Connecticut general statute provides in section 8-23 that the preparation, amendment, and adoption of a plan of conservation and development is supposed to happen once every 10 years. The commission is to prepare and amend and adopt a plan for the municipality. After you've adopted a plan, the commission shall readily review and maintain such plan. The statute provides that the commission may at any time prepare, amend, and adopt plans for the redevelopment and improvement of districts or neighborhoods which in its judgment contain special problems or opportunities. So the statute specifically anticipates situations like this, where the plan needs to be reviewed and amended. It is not meant to be static or fixed for the 10-year period. The town planning zoning commission would hold public hearing on input for that change. The reason the plan would have to be amended is so that it would then provide the consistency to provide for this type of age-restricted golf community district to be created here over the golf course. If the plan is then amended, the next stage would be an application by Toll Brothers to create an age-restricted golf community district that would be applicable to this particular area. This is similar to exactly what was done when the project that this town approved for Bradley Road for your other age-restricted project was put in place a number of years ago. It's the exact same kind of age restrictions, but that project included retail and was for many more units. There is absolutely no reason why a specially tailored district cannot be created to permit an active adult housing community that is linked to town golf course and its associated amenities. Specifically, such conditions that would essentially preclude this type of district being anywhere else, would exclude the availability of a golf course, an AT&amp;T golf course, available sewer from water located right there, and obviously, the commission through its process could look into the specifics of how to tailor the district. The town zoning regulations currently provide for an active adult planned development, which is an overlay district. Your section 3.11.1 provides that active adult planned developments may be established by the commission when they determine it is desirable to consider an entire parcel of land as a single unit of development for purposes of site planning and utilities, so that there's an coordinated and orderly plan of development. Your regs also provide that the establishment of these types of districts will permit the construction of alternative housing types to meet the needs of those aged 55 and older, and that these special design features would be in keeping with the goals of your town planning, and to meet the needs for housing to reflect evolving demographic patterns. Your zoning regulations provide for the specific site plan review once that district is established. So again, it's another layer there. Also, to the extent there's wetlands on the parcel, there'd be a wetland commission review as well. At each of these stages, there's a public hearing with public input. By amending the plan of conservation development and utilizing your established active adult planned development district as your model, you'd be complying with the statutory framework of planning and zoning, which does not allow response on it. Recently, in a case entitled Sharp versus Planning and Zoning Commission of Warder Town, court found that a zone change to permit a 55 and older age-restricted housing development at the site of an old school in a residential zone was non-spot zoning, since the residential use was in keeping with the complements of planning. So these types of districts have been upheld, and in fact, I think in Connecticut, there's probably over 200 age-restricted housing developments presently. With respect to the enforcement of 55 and older age restriction, age-restricted housing is permitted under the federal Fair Housing Act and in some recommended law, and when both the federal law and the state law do, it's to provide essentially that you're allowed to restrict the residency if you meet certain criteria. The specific criteria does not require that someone 55 and older owned the unit, just that the resident there be 55 and older, so it can be owned by someone that's younger. It restricts who can reside there. Most of these types of development prohibit people that are 18 years old and younger from living there on a permanent basis. Often, they'll have permission where they can be there for three months to account for, for instance, a college student that comes home for the summer, but the primary resident has to be 55 and older. That eliminates the issues when somebody files bankruptcy, or if there's the death of someone, and the passing of the ownership to someone who's under 55. You have to realize that there's essentially three levels of protection. There have been some questions at the other town meeting about, well, how is this going to be enforced? There's no guarantee of anything in life, but here you have probably an additional level that you typically don't have in most age-restricted housing. Most of these type of developments will have a local zoning approval, which will restrict the kind of use that the specific age-restricted houses, be it a 55 and older or a 62 and older, which is a different permitted type of restriction. This is the same kind of code the town's already put in place for the Bradley Road development. Thereafter, the condominium declaration that the owner then puts on this property when they sell these particular homes will restrict it to the 55 and older type of use, and there's specific requirements within that declaration that also are enforceable. The law requires that these types of developments have these provisions in place to qualify for that type of age restriction. In your situation, you're a little bit more unique, because here your town is selling this property if you agree to do that. When you sell this property, you can restrict for the covenant that it be used only for these types of age-restricted units. You have a third level of protection that most of these do not have in place. I made a few remarks last night, which was just sort of from my own standpoint. When I was town attorney, when the Country Club was closing, was about to be taken over by a developer, there was no question at the time that the soon-to-be new owner was going to attempt to develop an assisted living complex with well over 300 units, and that the town did not approve some type of that development along those lines, that property would have been the subject of an importable housing development with at least that number of units, none of which would have been age-restricted. As Ed indicated, that would have translated into extensive bore development, and no question preschool, school costs as the population was rising. The Board of Select, the Board of Finance in the town overwhelmingly decided to buy the Country Club to control the development of that 150 acres. It was always contemplated that some portion of the land would have to be developed to offset the cost of that acquisition. The first election and the Board of Select have for the past two years attempted to work out a sale or a long-term lease that would have been able to cover the debt service for the Country Club while striving to maintain the entire 1802 forest pool and tennis courts as a town asset and amended it. In these difficult economic times, the options are unfortunately few. You are presented with an opportunity to have a limited controlled development that will result in a lowering of the overall debt by approximately $2 million, and the promise of income from tax revenue to assist in covering the Country Club debt. It's 54 units, it's age-restricted, it's a very limited development.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. I just wanted to say a few words about the debt service on the club and some other financial information that I'm useful. information that I'm useful in your review. The first is that there was some confusion at the last meeting about whether or not there was sewer service to the property, and so we can sewer map and show you the location of the sewer line which runs down Woodfield Road into the property of fifty Woodfield Road. So we just wanted to clarify that, or anybody had any questions on that. Currently, we have a $7 million note, which at some point we have to borrow long-term. The note is an annual note at the moment, and at some point we need, in the future, in the near future, we need to convert that to a long-term debt. So the first gen here shows you what the $7 million tax exempt debt would look like in over a twenty-year period. That is at three and a quarter percent, which is roughly what the rate would be if we would borrow it today. And that is at $577,000 payment in year one, with declining interest payments as principal is paid. You have a $361,000 payment in year twenty. That gives you a little over $9.3 million in the debt payments of principal and interest for a $7 million tax exempt bond issue. So that's currently what we are faced with going forward. Just as a few things that you've heard already on the Toll Brothers proposal of seventeen acres and $2.2 million, a couple of highlights here, number of units of fifty-four units, and a referendum vote on the thirteenth, this is just some highlights of that proposal for you. There's a credit of up to $400,000 for the relocation of the cell tower. So effectively, for the purposes of the following presentation, a figure of $1.80 million was used for net sale proceeds, which would be used to pay down the outstanding country club debt. So currently, we have notes of $7 million, and those are annual notes, and the idea is to convert those to long-term debt once sale proceeds are received, if, of course, approved. And so the, that would give us a little over $5 million. We have a $350,000 pay-down due, which is one-twentieth of our principal debt, even though we're on a short-term basis. So that has to be paid in August of 2012. So therefore, our net debt, which we would have to borrow, assuming there's a reduction of $1.8 million and a $350,000 pay-down, would be $4.8 million. And just for illustrative purposes, I use the date of April of 2013. Of course, it could be, it's, of course, could be any date when the sale is, the closing takes place, but for purposes of this illustration, that was the data used. And what would happen is, as Jim explained, there's a second payment due twenty months, I think it's twenty months, Jim, after twenty-one months. So the notice proceeds would still be notes for following twenty-one months until that second payment received, and then the panel would pay off the notes. So essentially, $4.8 million would be a choosing bonds. So for the next two slides, I use a stable tax rate of $33.8 mil, oh, eight mils, over a twenty-year period. Two, I use two price ranges here. One is $389,000, which is more of the base model of these units, and $485,000 is just somewhat more of an average price. So I'm sorry to make this a small number, and we can definitely put this on our website tomorrow, which you can download and review. But what I wanted to explain is that the total debt in the debt column is $6.89 million, assuming a $4.8 million principal payment. And taxes over twenty years at $389,000 value would be $9 million, thus giving a surplus of above, or a difference between the taxes received and the debt paid above $2.1 million, which is that last column. You can see there's the first few years when the units are being built, where there's a subsidy of $300,000 in year one and two. And in the second slide, the $485,000 value was used, and the first few columns are the same. The taxes increased from $11 million to $11 million from nine, and the surplus increases to $4.4 million. So those are just some illustrations of what sort of the cash flow would look like on this transaction if it were to take place, just to aid in your decision. Finally, it's been mentioned that we have some other capital requests. These are the three current capital requests we have for consideration for bonding, and the values associated with each, including with the Board of Education, public works facility of $5 million, and a police department operating of $3.5 million. So I just wanted to show you what those targets were, so in case you have any questions. Okay?
I have spent the past week or so talking to various commercial real estate brokers because it was raised at a couple of our last meetings by several speakers that why doesn't the town turn over the country club of Woodbridge to a commercial real estate broker for the exploration and possible sale of the portion of the club that doesn't include the seventeen acres, which is the golf course, the swimming pool, the tennis courts? And people had some concerns about whether we were pursuing that in a proper manner so as to reduce the debt of the town. It's been the feeling of the Board of Selectmen, I think the Board of Finance, as well as several of the experts that we consulted with, that this is a horrendous market to sell a golf club, especially in view of the town's significant requirement that if so only there were conservation easements or restrictions on future development for things other than a golf course, that would, in effect, significantly reduce the market value of a property such as a golf course. I had conversations with Steve Miller, who is a local commercial real estate broker, and Larry Miller and Marette, who I think many of you know, and he confirmed that this would be a horrible time to sell golf courses. Except if we did want to do it, and it's certainly possible for the town to consider that, he thought the fair market value with a conservation easement would be no more than $3 million. I also talked to an individual, and that's Jeff Dugis in Chester, who is a MAI appraiser, and actively involved in the sales of golf courses around the country, and he also confirmed that it was his opinion that this is not the time to sell a golf course, and further confirmed that he thought that $3 million would be the outside price for a sale of the remaining portion of the country club. Both Steve and Jeff indicated and reaffirmed our feeling that the sale of these seventeen acres would not affect the marketability or the value of the remaining portion of the country club, which would consist of approximately 130 acres and the guts of the country club operation. By selling off these seventeen acres, which is on border of the country club, the value would be retained for the remaining portion. It's kind of like, you have a two-acre lot in an acre and a half zoning, an extra half acre is not going to get you an appreciable increase in value for the purchase of your property. That was confirmed, that confirmed opinion of experts that we consulted and the opinion to the Board of Selectmen. So the obvious conclusion is, while it's certainly is possible to put the remaining portion of the country club on the market for sale, assuming the Toll Brothers' proposal is approved, this is not the right time to do it, and even if we did do it, we would receive a very, very deflated value and return on our money from what we paid. Just as any kind of example of what some country clubs have been sold for in our region recently, and I, there aren't many sales, but the real estate commercial brokers getting to following. Valley Country Club in Rhode Island sold for $3.4 million. Georgetown Country Club in Massachusetts sold in April for $3.6 million. There's a country club on a Cape that is on the contract for $3.3 million, and probably the best assessment of value on it would be our own Oak Lane Country Club, which apparently is on the contract to be sold, in stages, one stage for approximately $1.1 million, the other stage, the remaining, holds to be sold in five years for approximately $1.5 million. And interestingly enough, the proposed purchaser of Oak Lane was asked by the Planning and Zoning Commission a few weeks ago whether he would consider a conservation easement on a portion of the property he was about to purchase, and he said absolutely not, that he would not buy that property for slightly less than $3 million if there was a conservation easement. So that pretty much establishes the value, which is low for a country club. But nevertheless, there is no requirement that we not put remaining portion of the country club on the market if we do sell the seventeen acres to Toll Brothers. And there was also several questions at the last couple of meetings about how many houses are on the market right now in Woodbridge. People think that there are a lot of houses on the market, and there were quite a few. There are sixty-two homes actively being marketed right now in Woodbridge, which is about the same amount of houses that were actively being marketed in 2010, and that was given to me by real estate people familiar with our residential market. So that's basically what we are faced with and where we need to go and why the Board of Selectmen felt that the seventeen acre Toll Brothers proposal is something that the town should seriously consider and look at and vote on December thirteenth. For those of you that are standing, there are some seats on the right that I can see if you might sit down and be more comfortable. I'd like to introduce next the representative of Toll Brothers to have some comments.
Good evening, and thank you for coming tonight. My name is Greg Kandalski, Division President with Toll Brothers for the New England area of the country. With me tonight is David Sands, also with Toll Brothers. Toll Brothers is a national home building company. We're listed on the New York Stock Exchange. In the state of Connecticut, we have completed thirty-three communities and delivered over seventeen hundred homes since 1992. It's interesting to note that every one of those communities, or we commenced construction of every one of those communities shortly thereafter closing on the land, every one of them. What we have before you tonight is a proposed age-restricted townhome development for fifty-four townhomes on approximately seventeen acres. The plan, although still conceptual, has gone through several iterations, and we believe we have a plan now that's a good plan. It does not infringe on the golf course, and it preserves all of the existing tennis courts. Some of the site plan highlights include a boulevard entrance into the community from Woodfield Road, and it's a short boulevard entrance, and then you can turn either right or left, as you can see in the site plan in front of you. Most of the buildings will have four townhomes per building. We will also build a small clubhouse or meeting room, which we found through experience, after having done many of these types of communities, that that's an essential part of the living experience in these types of age-restricted communities. The homes themselves are designed for empty nesters. All the homes that will be built will have master bedrooms on the first floor, all of them. Most of the living will be done on the first floor. Now, these are two-storing townhomes, so there is some living area on the second floor, but it's mostly loft area. There is a second bedroom on the second floor. The second floor living is designed more for visitors, more for the family to separate themselves during the living experience, but most of the living is designed on the first floor. There's a minimal number of steps into the, into the townhome, either through the garage or the front door, again, to accommodate the demographic that we're trying to sell to here. The heights, the height of the buildings, the height of the homes, is thirty-two feet on all sides, except where we have a walkout condition, and we have that in several of the locations. But other than that, the height of the homes is thirty-two feet. Your zoning regulations in the town of Woodbridge allow for a height of thirty-five feet in your residential zones. The homes will average about 2,200 square feet of living space. The price, the prices of the homes will start in, based on our current market research, will start in the high $300,000s. Some of the homes will be more expensive into the $400,000s. People can also select options to add to the home, which would obviously drive the price up from there. We believe, we know, that development would be a major plus economically for the town of Woodbridge. All the roads are private, so there's no road maintenance, there's no road maintenance cost to the town of Woodbridge. There's no school-aged children, or school-aged children are prohibited from living in the development, so there's no school costs. We've done several of these communities in Connecticut, many more throughout the country, and economically, it's a very positive cash flow on an annual basis to the towns where we develop. The development will also have a benefit to the economy in general. We've found historically that this kind of development will employ about 100 to 150 All our subcontractors are from the state of Connecticut, a lot of them will be local to the New Haven area. Also, the town of Woodbridge, we estimate with crew fees, like building permit fees, of over $100,000, which I don't believe was in the announcement. All the homes will be built and conform to the Town Woodbridge and State of Connecticut Building Codes and Regulations. We will have an intensive construction vehicle management program. Our business model is to have, in every community we develop, have an onsite project manager who is there every day. He's got a field office, he's there to answer questions from our homeowners, from residents, from town officials. He's always available during the week, weekends. He has a full staff working for him, and he's there, or she's there, to facilitate the construction of the development, but also to be on call if any issues arise. Toll Brothers has a ten-year homeowner warranty program for our buyers, which I don't believe any builder in the state of Connecticut has or offers. Our customer satisfaction rating for our customers that have bought homes from us in the state of Connecticut is over 94%, meaning that when we survey every customer who bought a home from us after they closed, over 94% of them had stated in the survey that they would recommend buying a Toll Brothers home to a friend. In the nineteen years that we've been in business in the state of Connecticut, nineteen years we've been in business in the state of Connecticut, we've only had one complaint fight against us with the Department of Consumer Protection. So we've delivered over seventeen hundred homes and had So we've delivered over 1,700 homes and had one complaint, which was discharged, I believe, after two weeks. We've never had a fine from a municipality and we've never had a cease and desist order from any municipality that we've worked in. And we've worked in a great variety of municipalities. I invite you to talk to any town official that we've worked in to find out for yourselves what we're about. So in summary, I believe that this proposed development will serve a real need for the residents in the town of Woodbridge. We've talked about the fact that it's age-restricted housing. Demographically, based on our research, we found that nearly a third of the residents in the town of Woodbridge are 55 years of age or older. We've found historically that anywhere from 20 to 35% of the homes that we develop in different communities that are age-restricted are bought by residents of that town. We certainly believe that this proposed development has a very positive economic impact on the town of Woodbridge. And then when finished, we believe it'll be the development of the town, that the residents of the town of Woodbridge will be proud of. Thank you.
In a moment, we're going to open up for the audience questions and/or comments, but a few ground rules first. Number one, there's a microphone set up in the middle aisle. Please come to the microphone so everybody in the room can hear you. Please identify yourself with name and address before you start speaking. And I would implore the audience to give everybody a fair chance to make their comments so that we can all hear what everyone has to say. I will now open up the floor to questions and/or comments.
I ask you one question. How much time, I know it's a tremendous crowd here, how much time does one have? Because they've got 18 points, it could take an hour and a half.
Well, I would hope that everybody could say what they have to say as expeditiously as possible. I have not, I'm trying to remember anybody. But I would hope that we can, that everybody can make their points in an expedition.
Hi, my name is Ray Burcina with the Hollow Road. First, I'd like to thank all the members of the Board of Selectmen. And most of you are volunteers, just putting in long hours of work. I truly believe what you're trying to do, if you think it's in the best interest of the town and its taxpayers. So I hope that there's no air of defense in this when we try to communicate our concerns. You guys generally do a great job. I have a question or comment and then a request. I'm an attorney, I've represented a few folks who bought homes from Toll Brothers. And at those closings, Toll Brothers has required payment in full of the entire purchase price of the closing. I'm curious as to why at this particular deal Toll Brothers is only being asked to come up with half of the money at the closing and half of the money in 20 months. Actually, Toll Brothers has a market cap of about $3.2 billion, a few dollars onward in the town of Woodbridge. And I'm wondering why Woodbridge is being asked to either lend, or if you will, for a portion of the purchase price. That's my question. My comment is, and I watch this stuff on TV, my wife thinks I have no life, but I actually watched the hearing. And the response was, well, we only got one bid. And it seems to me that we only got one bid for such an attractive piece of property. Maybe we didn't advertise it enough, or maybe we should have gone out with a national broker, you know, Love and Ellis or Coal Banker or some national group that could bring in national developers and both golf courses and residential homes to maybe get a higher price. It just seems that if we only had one bidder, maybe we didn't advertise enough. As most of the attorneys in the room know, we do a foreclosure sale and only one bidder shows up. The judge says, be advertised, you didn't advertise enough. So I'm wondering what would the harm be if we just re-advertise, hire a lot of national firms, try to get a higher price? And the third option is a request. This is obviously a very divisive thing in a town with a lot of people that are very emotional about this property. I'm wondering if one member of the Board of Selectmen would take it upon themselves to request maybe withdraw this referendum, refer this to more study, and then come back with a more...
I'll take a crack at the question about the paying half the closing and half the purchase price 21 months after closing. That's our proposal. The contract to purchase still needs to be negotiated. We made that proposal because while we do have a lot of cash, it does cost, there's a cost to carry if we lay all the capital out front, upfront when we close. And so the economics of this deal comes to play. That was our proposal to allow us an adequate return of capital. But it's subject to further negotiation.
The deposit question is a really good point. And as Greg said, we haven't finished the negotiation. We're going to keep talking to Toll Brothers about getting us 100% of the deposit, obviously. And we hope to get very close, if not to that point. But we have done significant research. And unlike a normal commercial or a normal residential closing where you do get paid upfront, this kind of a project, as we have learned, it's not uncommon for the seller not to receive 100% of deposit. As a matter of fact, we've been told that many developers have paid the purchase price and each unit is sold, the unit is released and the purchase price is paid. So it's not uncommon, even though it may be far into a lot of us, the way we usually do business, with this kind of a transaction, that's generally what's out there in the marketplace. However, Toll has said that they're willing to talk and negotiate about getting us either 100% or very close to 100% upfront. And no guarantee is of whether that would happen.
Let me take another crack at it. When most people buy a home, they don't pay all cash. They usually put 20% down, 30% down, and they finance the rest of the purchase. And what we're proposing here is to pay 50% cash at the closing and the town would take a purchase money mortgage for the remaining 50%.
To answer, this is the worst, the second part is to why we don't go out again for another offer. I assume you're talking about the 17 acre proposal or you're talking about the country club, RFP? If it's the second, let me just get to it. If it's the second 17 acre parcel, we all are cognizant of what's happening in the commercial real estate market, not only in Connecticut but around the country. There aren't very many people or many developers who can do a project like this in today's market. It costs a lot of money, you have to be very solid and you have to be able, be prepared to spend a lot of money to make your money. That eliminates a significant amount of developments who ordinarily would be very interested in this. So I think that's why we didn't get any more offers on the piece of property. And it is consistent with our appraisal and we think we have a very fair price in view of the fact that it's going to be very difficult to find somebody who might be interested.
I'm curious, did Toll Brothers have any contact with the town before the RFP went out?
No.
Yes.
Yes, they did, they did talk to them.
Oh, so they knew about the RFP before it came out?
They gave us an offer before the RFP.
Okay. Were any of the other developers, you know, national developers contacted?
Yes. I believe several national developers were basically connected or contacted. We had a consultant who was working with us on this and he contacted people, both through advertising and personal relationships.
So there was a national advertising?
Yes, there was. New England Real Estate Journal, I talked to Paul and Steve Miller, he said he saw it advertised in the New England Journal. And again, we're in a difficult time. I mean, this time eliminates many people, many developers who ordinarily would be interested in this project.
So I kind of get the point, but we held it to evidence a better time? Does that make sense?
Well, it's a $2.2 billion offer today with tax revenue between $500,000 and $600,000.
If they sell?
Yeah, if they sell, well, they also will still get revenue. So the question, do you want to put that off? Which is certainly a possibility and people will vote against it. Or do we want to take the opportunity to go ahead now to reuse that?
It just seems like when we reacted to the recent proposal, when he was going to buy the note on the club, when we jumped in and paid probably a pretty high price together. And now it seems like we'll react to it again and someone says we bought high, we're selling low. And it'll be nice if we can sort of sit back and plan and do a more organized process.
Chris? Hi, Chris Dickerson, Sixth Mountain Street. And I hope you'll indulge in a few questions. Mr. Carrillo, you mentioned that the contract that was revised dated November 14th, is that correct?
No, I said they had sent a letter in the pen in October.
October 5th, correct.
And then they sent another one, which is what the Board of Selectmen dealt with in November.
Okay, on the town website today, the only thing I'm there is the contract from October 5th. So is most of that contract still valid?
It's a law for a tentative contract.
Okay. My questions are, how long does Toll Brothers have to receive all of the approvals necessary to do the project?
Again, that's a detail of the contract that we have not placed yet because those are questions that have to be answered if the town decides to want to sell the project.
In the contract, in the request of interest dated October 5th, there's a right of first refusal assigned to Toll Brothers to remaining residual land, which doesn't include the golf course. But I would presume it would include the land that's on the eastern side of Woodfield Road.
No, that's not part of the November.
What would have been helpful would be to have these updates on the town website today. Now, if you received it November 14th, it's November 29th, that could have been offered. So we could have all the information. That's not a problem.
I wasn't aware of those on my website.
I'm not directing that comment. Mr. Jennings, you stated that your projections are based on a closing date of April 13th?
April 2000.
April, sorry, April 2013. And looking at the agreement, the expression of interest from the Toll Brothers, it says they have 60 days to close after they receive all their approvals, which would mean that they would have to receive all of their approvals by February 2013. If they started that process January 2012, that would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 13 months. It took the Woodbridge Village project approximately 30 months to receive all their approvals for their active development. Why would this project receive all of its approvals so much quicker than the same type of project in the same town? That was a... The military... That was... Use the mic.
That timeline was designed to show the cash flow for illustrative purposes. Obviously, if it takes longer, then the figures and the assumptions would change in the projection.
And the reality is it's probably going to take quite a bit longer and those figures and projections are going to come back. Mr. Weiner, when you contacted the commercial realtors and asked them about the feasibility of selling the golf course, did you ask them what they thought about selling the 17 acres of land in this economic climate?
I think everybody I've talked to who was familiar with real estate thought that it was a very good price and you were very, you were very fortunate to have a developer who was willing to come into this community in this economic climate and invest the money into this project when we reuse our debt.
Did you ask anyone if they thought this is a good time to sell the 17 acres of land?
I think generally they think it's...
Did you ask them that question? Did you ask them about the golf course? Did you ask them about the 17 acres?
Yes, they did, and they thought it was a very good price. And they thought it was a reasonable proposal for the town to consider at a referendum. Again, especially if you don't detract from the country club viability and marketability. And in fact, some of them said that the sale of this property for townhouses, 55 and older housing, would enhance the value of the remaining part of the country club because it gives a built-in community use of the country club.
Mr. Shee, twice you've stated that the Woodbridge Village project is not ready to go forward. This is a project for 147 55 and older units that has been already approved in Woodbridge. And also, a member of the Board of Finance also stated that that project is not ready to go forward. The principals of Woodbridge Village came to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission in March 2011 and asked that their project be phased in. The original approval required for that project, all 147 units, all of its retail space and its village green, be built at one time. They asked that they could phase their project in and they were denied.
I don't know whether they were denied or not, but I think that's the way you...
But it was not approved.
I think you were on the committee that approved that project.
I was on the Town Planning and Zoning Commission.
And one of the conditions was that it be built all at once, that you voted for it.
That's correct.
Okay. And so they have come, I know, and they're interested in trying to do it in pieces.
Yes.
Contrary to what you decided how it should be done.
We decided I...
I'm not a member of the... I'm not a member of the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, so I didn't participate.
But when you say that they're not ready to go forward, they are ready to go forward, they're trying to get some relief from the town.
We met with them in May. They came, the principals came to speak to me and said that they were not able to go forward because they don't have the financing, they don't have the money. That's the reason they can't go forward.
Did they send you a letter in the last couple of weeks?
They didn't.
It wasn't a letter sent?
The letter said that they would like to work, in essence, work with us to make sure that both projects could go forward.
It didn't state that if this project's approved, it would severely jeopardize their project?
I can't recall if it said that or not, but I think these two projects are different. This is a much, the project you're talking about is much more dense, it's smaller in size and units, and it has a commercial element to it. But in response to that letter, I asked our town attorney to contact their attorney and he'll tell you about the contract.
First of all, they did not come to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a formal proposal. They did come for an informal meeting and they were told by Planning and Zoning, as far as I understand it, to come back with a formal proposal about the phase in and what they proposed to do. And we did receive that letter, I think, last week, two weeks ago. Ed asked me to call their lawyer and find out what they wanted. And I asked their lawyer, I think we received the letter on Thursday, I called them on a Friday, and I said, please talk to your client, get back to us and let us know exactly what they want to do, what are they prepared to start with, and file a formal application with Planning and Zoning. He said he would and he came right back to me and I've not heard from him since then. But make no mistake, that that is a project that is worthwhile, that's good, and hopefully they can get to a point where they start construction.
My concern is that this project is approved, that larger project will be put, Jeff?
It's been three years since their approval and they haven't started in three years. It's a question for the town, should we put off the opportunity we have now in the expectation that at some point in the future it will be built? They came to us and said they didn't have the financing because of the economic climate and the downturn in the market since they received approval from your board. And that's what they can proceed. They may be able to, but there's a chance that they don't do it. And the question is, how long does the town wait and perhaps lose an opportunity here?
I was wondering if the town officials got Toll Brothers together with Woodbridge Village. They tried to partner the two of them to do that project. They have the money, Woodbridge Village has an approved project, and it would benefit the town much bigger than this project.
Can you identify yourself?
Yeah, I will, I will, give you a chance. My name is Alexandra Carrera, and I am absolutely and honorably disappointed with this project. I live on the corner of Woodfield and Fountain, and so I'm going to be very personally affected by this project. I haven't been in Woodbridge for that long, but when we moved to Woodbridge, we did ask for a permit. At the time, I was very annoyed, but I felt that the people that were requesting permits were being very diligent, very responsible, and they took us about a year to get a permit and only extended the footprint of our house by a small five-by-eight feet, okay? What I don't understand is, is why is this being ramped up on roads? That, that's one of my questions. The other point is that because I live on Woodfield and Fountain, and we have only been here four to five years, I've seen three horrific accidents. All this talk about money, all this talk about the taxes, we're not talking about the traffic that's going to go down Woodfield. How are you talking about creating a boulevard as if Woodfield was two fifteen? I don't know what kind of boulevard you're going to put on these developments, but what I see is a very dangerous intersection. Two of these accidents ended up on my neighbor's, on my neighbor's door, right in front of their home. So how will you avoid the traffic that you're going to bring onto Woodfield? That's one of my questions. The other problem I have with the traffic is that already, as I wait for the bus in the morning with my child on Woodfield, there are people that constantly pass the stop sign. I don't see how, until you address the size of Woodfield, you can even talk about anything else, because accidents are going to continue to happen here. The other thing we were told, and I don't know how you're going to address this, is the utility problem. Where is all this sewage? Where is all this sewage going to go? From all of these places? And lastly, the tower they're moving is going to be right on top of my head. My house is adjacent to a property that's a very alarmingly necessary place. The woman that donated the property to the town, to the land trust, was thinking that that was going to continue to happen. The tower, the tower is definitely going to disrupt that. I know that it's an economic, very difficult economic time, people don't want to talk about the environment, but we really should. And so that tower is perfectly fine where it is. I don't understand why you in fact have to do this, why you're looking at Woodfield as the road where all of these cars are going to have to go through because of the other road? And I also don't understand why you're going to the town basically on or to hunt unless I was sleeping, to make a decision that's a very difficult decision.
My name is Frank Alistro. I have property front on Follington Street and Woodfield Road, my back lot. What I don't understand is, I was here, I think, a month or a half ago, and we decided, and the first selection, Mr. Sheehan, like all the rest of the selection, started with Mr. Clark, Russ Stoddard, Manburg, Russell, everyone was for keeping. All you people like to live in a small town. This is a small town, now you want it to grow. You have problems with town, you have more people, you have to have greater police department, fire department, and so forth. Now, I have a question that I want to ask. How was it, when I left that last meeting a month and a half ago, honorable first selection shade, how could you let me leave that meeting thinking that the entire Woodbridge Club property would be left, and here's the word, in perpetuity, means forever, like all the past selection? Now I went home, and a month and a half later, I pick up the register, and all of a sudden, you're for seventeen thousand, I mean seventeen hundred acres given away. I can't understand how you want to be in a position of a high seat or a low flat. Not only that, are you going to be responsible for the deaths at Woodfield Road in Follington Street? Let me tell you something, I would like you to go tomorrow morning across from my property, the cars go by fifty, sixty miles an hour, you never stop. It takes me, and I can prove it if you would go there, it takes you five minutes to cross the street. Now you want citizens my age or younger, sixty and up, who have my disabilities. I cannot try that, I, you know why I'm here tonight? I made a supreme effort to be here because I do not want to see this horrible venture project take place. Why didn't you not let us know that those seventeen acres were going to be sold? You must have known about it, just a grand scheme that took months to create. How come it happened? How might we get it signed? And incidentally, before we talk, I'm a registered Republican, a former guidance officer for thirty-four years, I'm eighty-six years old, I have to go to Central Medical Hospital tomorrow morning to get two pints of blood to live. I hope to make it to ninety years old. Now, I want you to explain why we changed the tune from a high seat to a low flat, being a musician I am. Incidentally, if you want to see me perform, I'm still tuned to my horn, I'll be able to overheal, just telling you something, I want. Excuse me, one of the things that required, I've got eighteen points, I went through three of them, okay, one thing that I have to worry about too. When you look at that map, that road looks straight. It isn't. Once you get beyond the Woodbridge Country Club, and you're going west and south, but now road, you know what's going to happen if you ever have that development here? You have to expand that road, and all the money is going to go down the road that you're going to spend.
I, I know you said you're going to be performing at the Foxwoods, or that or that, but... Okay, all right. But I, I do appreciate all your efforts.
President Republican, I voted for you for your integrity, and you did an about phrase, and I hear it.
Okay, all right. I want to thank you for all the services you've performed for the town of Woodbridge, especially on Armistice Day and Memorial Day, Veterans Day. But let me answer your question first about the traffic there.
If you showed this picture to the audience, my contribution to the town of Woodbridge. This is on the front page of the local newspapers, and Joe Hellorder, how many years I've been playing taps for the town, I give them power.
I do, and I, we, we appreciate it.
I'm a little nervous.
Here, here's a great picture of you performing. But apart, apart from this project, Frank, if there's a problem with traffic there, we'll get Chief Markucci over there tomorrow. I mean, we'll, forget about this project. If there's speeding there, suggest, we'll have the police look into that.
It's a state road, you better put a traffic light up there, it's not going to happen. You know what happened on the way to the dump when we got rid of our pockets? They had a wonderful light, they had you killing us. You're asking for trouble. Are you going to be responsible for those deaths?
Well, I'm going to be responsible, make sure that the police enforce, enforce the speed limits on Tom Road and Woodfield Road, okay?
My reflexes, and also, when I have my elders, what's going to happen to people sixty years old going all around our town to just want to get the car off? Impossible.
Well, let me just comment on what you said about, about doing a change of pace or change of heart, and I'm not tone deaf. At the meeting on May, May two thousand and nine, when the town voted to buy this property, I said at that time, it was a consensus, that most people, that part of this property is going to have to be developed. And I said that at the swearing in, and we've said this over the past two years, so...
You said it would be in perpetuity.
I did, and I said that, I would swear.
Ever.
I agree, I agree, perpetuity. What I was referring to is the eighteen hole golf course. That's why we want to keep this open space, so a small court exists to be developed. And listen, if you're against it, you vote, you vote no, that's all right, it's fine. I mean, this, we're making a proposal to the town, which the board of selectmen, the board of finance think is in the best interest of the town alone, right? Keep our taxes as well as we can, and preserve open space for the Country Club. And we can disagree, and we can disagree as friends.
A volunteer played taps.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Denise Rock, and I live at twenty-three Grouse Lane. I was a former member of the Woodbridge Country Club, but it's lost place. And when we started this, I mean, it was really a mess, and you did say, Mr. Sheehan, that it was part of it would be developed, possibly developed, but we also said that part of it would remain a jewel for the town. And right now, this proposal is, is destroying the jewel. What I've heard from you is that we may end up with a debt or a bill of four-point-eight million dollars to be financed. I've heard nothing about other part of this proposal of the club, income, future income, and how that will affect our debt. I've heard absolutely nothing.
Excuse me?
That's not what is before us tonight.
It may not be what is before us tonight, but it is what was proposed when we first purchased this property. And I have heard nothing from the town about the club, and how we're going to move forward, and how we're going to maintain that club. You're saying that you want to sell the two, for two-point-five million dollars to Toll Brothers. You're also saying that we may sell it. How can it be an advantage now than you sell it later? To be future destroyed. Am I missing something?
What is before us tonight is the sale of these seventeen acres to be developed for a fifty-five and over housing. The conversation that's taken place tonight and prior public information sessions is about selling the golf course with a conservation restriction, which would mean that the town would don't want her own, but it would remain in perpetuity as a golf course. And the town would be willing to do that. There isn't any buyers out here for that, that's, that's what we found out, so...
But I don't think there's a real buyer of tip of the land right now. We're willing to finance it ourselves. This is a very flawed deal, the way we're looking at it right now. We're allowing them to pick, if we give them a four-hundred-thousand-dollar credit, and they said they're moving the cell tower, we're moving the cell tower. We're giving them credit, we're moving it. Why do we have to give them a credit to move the cell tower?
That's what it's going to cost, that's...
But we're paying for it if we give them a credit.
That's part of the deal.
It's a very flawed deal, and it's not a definite decision.